Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our April seventh Dan Ellenboro Council meeting. Our first item on the agenda is a call to order and the rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the Sunshine Statement Roll Call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats. Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the Sunshine Statement Roll Call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats.
This meeting of the Dan Ellenboro Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of April seventh, twenty twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, twenty twenty five, and as the teleconference was noticed on the official Dan Ellen website on April fourth, twenty twenty five, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on April fourth, twenty twenty five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento?
President.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark noted absent.
Okay, before we move on to the remainder of our agenda, I'm going to ask council if we can make a motion and a second to amend the agenda to bring up Resolution one fifty five, which is a resolution to put appoint Denise Donato as Court Administrator for the Danell Municipal Court. Her family is here if we can bring it up to the top of the meeting. Um, I see she has young children, maybe they get back home and uh get to bed early to force school. So council bureau okay with that? Can we have a motion second to a motion to amend the agenda as so?
Second, Rios.
Move it.
Okay.
Okay. That's amended. Do we have to read the resolution as a first and second?
Uh, yes.
Okay, can I have a motion and second on item number one fifty five, resolution to appoint Denise Donato as Court Administrator for the Danell Municipal Court?
Move it.
Second, second.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes. Denise? Left hand or right hand? Okay, you might get to be that for me. I, Denise Donato, do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey that are their true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. So help you God, congratulations.
If I may speak really quick about Mrs. Donato, Denise has uh been with Dan Ellen for how many years now? Two and a half. She started as a violations clerk, made her way to the Deputy Court Administrator and is now leading our court as the Court Administrator uh after filling in a few times, but she, I think rightfully so, has the position now full time, no longer acting. So congratulations. God bless you. Keep up the great work. Okay, next up on our agenda is presentations. Um, we have the presentation of our budget being presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Scott Olson, as well as our Business Administrator, Alex Miller. So. And you have the presentation?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So uh so we're getting close to like six months. I think we've been working on this, right, Alex? When this, when this all started uh towards the end of, the end of last year when we were Alex was asking department heads to put together what they think they were gonna need to spend in, in twenty twenty five. And so here we are at the end of, of uh that process. I'd like to recognize um some folks who worked a lot on this, on this project. Of course, it was all the, uh, all the department heads went through reviews with Alex and um Dawn Hutchison played a, played a key role in uh those meetings as well and putting together some of the data. Um, the administrator Alex, myself, and uh Lauren was involved too. I want to note also our, our audit, auditors, uh Suppley Pluni and Company, and our bond counsel, which is um uh Matt Jessup from McManam and Scotland Bowman, and we had NW Financial Group that was also involved in a lot of this uh activity also. So with that, tonight is the introduction and approval of the budget. It's not the adoption of the budget. That's gonna happen a month from now. This is a unique um item in municipal government because it's the only time that there's a, that there's a um meeting and then a public hearing that's a month later. And if we're required, we're required to have that uh at least a twenty eight day span between, between the two dates to give the public adequate time to take a look at things. It's the only time you'll see this. You, you'll see ordinances where there's an introduction and then a public hearing at the next meeting. But this is at the meeting after that. So it's unique in, in municipal government. So it's, it makes it a little bit different. So. I guess I gotta point at the laptop or what? Okay. Thank you. First time, first.
There you go. Just pointed like that.
Yeah, I was going to the next one.
Okay.
Can you go to the next one?
Sure.
Oh, down to go.
Down.
Oh, okay. All right. So here we are, April seventh, the, the budget introduction. Uh, it's a requirement to have an advertisement of the budget, which will go in the paper this Thursday, and then the public hearing adoption, as I said, on May fifth. So recapping, what is, what is a municipal budget? What is a budget? Well, it's a, it's a spending plan. It's an idea of what, what you think you're going to need to spend and how are you gonna come up with resources to, to cover that? Um, it also includes a capital plan, which you'll see later on today. There is a bond ordinance which encompasses the, almost the entire uh capital plan for twenty twenty five. Um, and it includes discretionary and non-discretionary spending. So the non-discretionary spending are things like health insurance, pension costs. The discretionary uh are just, you know, every, everything else. Um, but less than ten percent of the budget is discretionary spending. Most of it is, like I said, it's group health insurance, salary, contractual salaries, retirements. Uh, it's the, the match for Social Security and Medicare and our debt. So these are some of the items that were driving this year's budget. We had a huge, huge healthcare costs, big, big increase. And my understanding is that next year is going to be bigger. Double digits, uh, upper double digits too, like, you know, seventeen, I don't know, seventeen, nineteen, who knows, percent increases, which is just very difficult to keep up with. Um, we have taken though proactive measures to try and get around that or get get by it. So one of the things that we've done is we've introduced a, a, what's called a difference card program so that employees can choose a lower costing premium, but they get the um benefits off, offset by using the, this difference card. And that has saved the borough some money. We have a more efficient phone system that's projected to generate savings this year. Uh, another thing that was driving this budget was last year, the Board of Public Utilities had a big big increase on uh fire hydrant, the servicing, the fire hydrant, so the, the water for that. And the, so there was water, gas, uh, natural gas increases, electricity increases, and we're feeling that impact this year, the full impact this year, because it happened towards the end of last year. Pension and Social Security and co- contributions were up were in seven percent, and the debt service is also increasing. Our debt service is how we pay for some of the larger improvements. Those that cost more than five thousand dollars, which doesn't seem like a lot, but nowadays uh it is. So um our debt service is increasing. Um, and we're, but we ha- we have a way of offsetting it by using other monies to try and uh cover some of the, come, cover some of the debt service there. And we've made strategic hires last year that, that we put into place that we're now absorbing the salaries in full for this year, but those hires were strategic in that they, we're, we're hoping that that will enhance efficiency and long term uh be a long term benefit for the, for the borough.
Scott, hold on a second?
Yeah.
When Scott was talking about the health insurance, our health insurance in the last three years is about forty seven percent. Forty seven percent. Now, last year, the borough, we, we were able to switch uh to a different uh state insurance for twenty thirty five when New Jersey threw a cap. And with that, we saved about hundred thirty one thousand dollars. Well, across the board, the state insurance went up forty seven, forty seven point five percent the last three years. So we're gonna again start digging in and see if we can get into another possible plan with the work on mobile plus. It's straight across the board. It's affecting every municipality, whatever state insurance that you have. Everybody's getting hit hard with this.
And so about the two of these that municipalities are in state planning, got full impact, but the state negotiated all the state based on what we've normally been standing three percent for us. It's how they negotiate, even the state of the day just three percent of it. But municipalities are in front of it. So.
Very important. And, and again, because we made that switch last year, um we, if we didn't make that switch, we'd be paying another hundred thirty thousand dollars on the top of it. So from the switch from last year to now, we're actually paying slightly less than we were a year ago. But it's still a lot across the field.
I do want to mention too that employees also contribute a portion of their salaries to offset this cost. So when, when the cost goes up for the borough, the contribution cost goes up for the employees also. So the estimated uh levy, which is the, um, I'll, I'll get to that in the next slide, for twenty twenty five is about twenty four million. That's all in. That's your county, uh, open space, schools, plus the municipal portion and the library. And you can see where most of your money goes, right? That, that chart is pretty obvious that the schools are getting about uh most, what is that? I don't know, sixty percent of of uh every hundred dollars, they're getting sixty, okay? So, but Borough is the tax collector for everybody. So we take in all the money and then we give the county their share and we give the library their share and we give the the, the schools their, their big share. And then we have to operate on what's left.
God, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, we've also now as a municipality for a long term contract on health insurance, all new employees would be required upon retirement to contribute to their health insurance, which before it was something they received a full benefit. Both the union, the C W, the welfare contractor, the city board, the forward, they have to do their back to retire. So those are efforts that are taking long term, not for those who are in full advantage of the retirements.
All right, thank you. So here we go, here we go. What is the tax levy? It's the amount of money that's needed to be raised by equitable distribution among all the borough property owners. So the, the assessor is very busy making an assessment of everybody's property. What is, what is it worth, worth in the, in the market? She tries to gather up all that information. We have a big pot that's becomes the denominator that we're gonna divide our number into, right? So it's the latest property valuation the assessor makes as of October first of the prior year. All right, so, so that's gonna be a, a, a source, a source of revenue for us because ultimately we're gonna take the amount that we need to balance the budget and divide by that big, that big number, okay? And that's gonna become a, a rate. We're gonna turn that into a rate and that rate times your property is gonna give us the taxes that you will. So we also are from uh kind of constrained, I would say, by two different types of caps. There was a, a cap that was introduced in two thousand seven, it was earlier, nineteen seventy seven, I think, was when the first cap was introduced. It was a, um, a spending cap. In those days, the legislature thought that the best way to keep taxes down was to, was to put a cap on how much a municipality could spend. So it's called an appropriation cap. And in two thousand seven, under Governor Corzine, that cap was set at four percent above the prior year's lev- um I know, wait, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting mixed up here. This is, this is the levy cap. Okay. All right. I'm talking about the appropriations cap. There's two caps. Appropriations cap was on spending, the levy cap is on how much taxes could go up. And this is what Corzine changed in two thousand seven to four percent, and then Governor Christie reset it to two percent. And so that is the, the cap that has more restraint on our budget because we're, we're very limited to how much we can increase taxes. We're also affected by the appropriations cap, so we have to look at both of them. And I'll show you, I'll show you a slide coming up that, that shows you how far uh or how near or how far we are to those caps. There are circumstances where we can pass increases uh through and that, that are not controlled by that, by that cap. Those are for new construction, for a debt service, for pension and health benefit contributions in excess of what the state says you're, you're allowed to have. Things like that. And well, I'll, I'll show you that as we get, as we get through this. So we are under the, the levy cap, but with some exclusions. So let's see. Ryan, is there any way to make this any bigger? So this is the state formula uh that we have to submit with the budget. It's a, it's a, a levy cap calculation where we start with what the prior year amount to be raised by taxes. What, what's the amount that everybody's got to chip into to pay? And last year, it's difficult to say, but it was about six million dollars. Two percent on top of six million is how much? Anybody? Class, class? Come on. One twenty, one twenty. Okay, all right, very good. Not too many math majors here. What were your poli sci? What? So, okay, about, about a hundred twenty thousand. That's not, that's not a lot. That's not a lot of money at all. So um we have to take uh some of the inclusions. You'll see in the middle part in the, in the orange box, there's health insurance premiums that, that are exceptions. There's pension exceptions. There's debt service exemptions. Um, and that, all those uh are summed to about three hundred thousand dollars. So all together, we're going from, we're allowed to go, the maximum allowable that we're, that we can raise taxes, six point four million. Okay, we came in at six point three nine oh, so we're, we're under by about forty thousand. Okay, that's, that's the good news. The I don't know if I want to say too much more about that. We, we do add, there is a line to add in um for new ratables, new construction. So as, as homes get uh developed and, and changes are made, we're able to add in those new homes so that they can add to the uh levy cap that we're allowed to go to. All right. So forty thousand under, which is good. Here's the appropriations cap, nineteen seventy seven somewhere, I think. But uh it shows, what does it show? That we're allowed two and a half percent or the cost of living adjustment, the COLA, whichever is less. And in twenty twenty five, the two and a half percent allowable increase is eight million sixty four. That includes the same new construction of ten thousand that we saw on the previous slide. And it may be increased, this cap may be increased by up to three and a half percent by ordinance. And tonight we're going to introduce a cost of living adjustment ordinance uh to go along with this, to support, to support this. This also creates a cap bank, which is not a bank in the traditional sense. It's just um headspace that we could tap into if we need the room in, in future budget years. And we're allowed to bank this for two years. So we're under the appropriations cap by about a hundred and ten thousand and uh so, so like I said before, this is not the cap that's more restrictive. It's the other one. Right? That one, we only had forty thousand difference. This one, we have a hundred thousand difference. So the other one is a bit more restrictive. Does that make sense? Okay. Haven't lost you yet. Okay. Alex, are you doing any slide yet? Okay. So in December, I, I, I met with all the departments and we, we started talking about their O and E expenses and all that stuff. And as we're going through different uh lines and, and such, you know, you come across where on here you'll see about the uh government administrative, the percentage went up. And, and that's because of the way we restructured, the way our, our staffing is. That, that would be the um communication coordinator, the director of um uh community development. It's all underneath administration now. So also that, that comes into, to play was the debt service and, and a lot of, a lot of that comes into where we had to go with paying down the debt, including uh projects, including the firehouse and all that. So um the statutory uh line, there's nothing we can do about that. That's, that's, that's stuff that whether it's a pension and health benefits, there's nothing that we, we can't, there's nothing we can do with those departments. So Scott, this is you and I'm back up. So for twenty twenty five, the appropriations are about ten point seven uh seven million dollars. Um, it includes, as you can see, salaries is, is one of the larger portions, almost forty percent of that total is, is salaries. Um, we have statutory expenditures, which are the things that we've talked about, the, the pension, the health benefits and, and Social Security and that, that. Um, there's a hundred thousand dollar capital contribution that we're gonna use as a down payment on borrowing for larger capital projects. So these are the ones I, I, I said it costs over five thousand dollars. They, they have, have to have a useful life of at least five years. It's your bigger ticket items. It's your, it's your dump trucks, your Mason dump trucks, snow plows, um uh servers. Um, we, we also have uh some things and you'll see in the, in the bond ordinance that's up for introduction tonight, um, some of the items that, that are making up the, the twenty twenty five capital plan. Um, so this, I want to point out to you the portion of the pie in green up there, the reserve for uncollected taxes. What is the reserve for uncollected taxes? We call it the RUT. So the RUT is a way for us to make sure that we can pay the schools and the county and the library and everybody else, and we still have enough to cover our budget. Because not everybody's gonna pay, right? There's gonna be people that forever, whatever reason they, they aren't able to pay. So we need, for every dollar that we need to collect, we have to bill for a dollar one or a dollar two. Okay, that will help us cover those who don't make their payments, but gives us enough money. And that's what that, it's a calculation, the reserve for uncollected taxes. So that, that's a, a statutory required piece to have. And let's see, debt service is a, is a fair sized chunk there. Um, and statutory expenditures, I think we, we talked about it. Other expenses are, are what the department used to operate. It's, it's purchasing, you know, um, maintenance plans on their, on their equipment. It's, it's a paper, it's toner, it's all that, all the stuff that any business needs to operate. We have that too. So ours is about twenty four percent of our, of the total budget. All right. What about the other side? Because in New Jersey, you have to have a balanced budget. Your expenditures have to equal the money coming in. So the big blue part is how we're relying on all of you with, with property taxes and me and, and mayor and Al, and not Alex. Getting, yeah. So, all right, so we also have a a couple of, of different pieces in there too. There's a local revenue share. That's the orange part up there. I guess I could go with my my uh nope, going backwards. Are you going backwards? Yes, I am. Uh, I, I saw. Okay. Okay, there. There. I don't know. I won't, I won't bother with that. Okay. First day with a new, with a new toy, so. Don't they tell you, like, figure it out before you get up here, right? Note to self. So anyway, um, budget revenues have to offset the expenditure. So we have some money coming in from state aid. We have surplus. We have local revenues. We have the, the delinquent taxes, other special items and the amount to be raised. Okay. So amount to be raised by taxes, we talked about. You know, for our construction code, that's all of our permits and fees for people who are doing work on their homes or new homes. Um, and, and included in that were all the permits that were taken out for for the building permits and, and plumbing and electric and all the work that was, that was uh being done over the nail and the crossing and, and some of the other uh locations too. So surplus is, is exactly that. We, surplus is money that we have accumulated over the, over the year and we use it strategically to balance the budget. We're, we're trying to use it, it, it's like we're walking the tight rope here and I got the long bar. And I got the long bar I'm holding on to, and this side is surplus and this side is taxes. You know, when you, we're trying to strike that balance as we walk this, this highway. You know, how much do we use in surplus? How much do we want to raise taxes? It's, it really is kind of high wire. But the, the blue portion, the light blue portion, the other special items, that's what we're trying to grow. That's the part, that's the payment in lieu of taxes that some of these developments are, are doing through town. So they don't pay traditional taxes, they pay a payment in lieu of taxes. So the town gets ninety five percent of that money. Five percent goes to the county. But as we grow that portion of the budget, we expect the, the dark blue to, to shrink in size somewhat. And that's what, that's what we're trying to do. That's what there's a large focus on. It's going on and been going on for the last couple of years. So, uh, delinquent taxes, of course, are for those, for those folks that, that can't make their taxes. We sell them the following year. And we, we eventually will collect all the taxes. But we use it as a revenue in the succeeding year, and it's about two percent. All right. What do we have? Okay. So New Jersey has always been based, revenues have always, or taxes anyway, have always been based on property value. And that goes also for how the state got money from different entities like the railroads and the utilities and electric companies. So years ago, it was called the franchise. It was a franchise tax. And I'm talking, you know, eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds. It was very preliminary, way back then, they were collecting, you know, a penny per acre, whatever it was on the property that you own. So, so there was a, a tax called the, called the franchise tax. And then there was another tax called the gross receipts tax. And if they combined, they would have the unfortunate acronym of gross receipts of franchise tax or GRAFT. So, but those were eventually replaced during Governor Whitman's term. Everybody remembers Governor Whitman. By the energy receipts tax. And that was a way that municipalities would get as much of the gross receipts and franchise taxes as, as they had gotten previously. But there was a kicker in there that would, that would escalate every year. Well, what happened was, uh, the state years, I guess, not, not during Governor Whitman's term, but afterwards, the, the state kind of changed their mind on how they were going to follow that. And they came up with an energy receipts tax and a consolidated municipal property relief tax. And those were supposed to increase over time. But what happened was, they said, okay, we're going to let the energy receipts tax go up, but we're going to let the consolidated municipal property taxes go down so that you would stay, the municipalities would stay flat. That's kind of a brief, brief history of that. And what this chart shows you is if the state funding had continued to increase based on a, on a factor called the implicit price deflator, then we should have gotten what's shown on the red, the red graph up there, the red, the red line. We should have gotten that, but we've been flat all these years. So there's a big difference between what we were getting, particularly this year, which is around six hundred thousand. And, and if the state had kept up with their obligation, we would have gotten over a million dollars. So that's part of the problem that, that all municipalities are facing is that the money that was kind of promised back then, it's been altered. We're not going to get it, you know? We do get some, we're happy to get what we get. But, but it, it could have been more. And this, this calculator is off the League of Municipalities website. So thank you, Mayor, for throwing that my way.
So, so obviously, it's a question that our involvement is about. State is supposed to be giving us more money.
Yeah.
So in twenty three, we're supposed to get over a million dollars, and we got six hundred thousand.
Right.
And let's face it, tougher on us, building a project, working around. It should have been funded, we should have got that story from the state.
Yes.
And there's efforts between the League of Municipalities, the Jersey Council, the mayor, it's the most legislature, um, that reinstated our funding. We got a little success. After two years ago, we got a little bit of funding. Um, but the efforts to get back to the retirement, what we call that is. And I think the important thing to note about the slide is while the cost of everything goes up and what the state is saying to the city, we're left with trying to figure out how we run effective, efficient government. We couldn't platter that money after they promised us spectacularly. We're seeing that red line. So I think the point to make is this, while we think of a responsible budget, there's still money on the table that they have all grown up.
Yep, yep. All right. So I started talking about the tax rate. And that's, you know, definition wise, it's a multiplier. Uh, and, and we, we use it to kind of figure out what, what people are going to have to pay for their, on their, on their property. It's based on a hundred dollars of assessed value. It's a, it's a kind of a, a, a dollar amount per every hundred dollars of, of value that your home has. So the municipal tax rate is the, the total amount that the borough needs to raise through taxes and is divided by the total amount of the value of all the property. So it's a pretty straightforward calculation. Uh, and this slide shows that, let's see if I can, I can help point this out. I see this, I see the light here, but it doesn't go up there. Why is that? Okay. Oh, okay. All right. If I do this, well...
Yeah.
All right. So this is a comparison between twenty twenty five and, and twenty twenty four. Our expenditures, the, the top line, the expenditures have increased by seven hundred and seventy thousand over twenty twenty four. While our revenues have increased about three hundred and seventy eight thousand over twenty twenty four. The difference is three hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. That's how much we need to raise to fill in the gap between what we want to spend and the other sources of revenue. Okay? So that, it's a, a three hundred and ninety two thousand. But the value of the property went up significantly last year by, by almost forty six million dollars. Okay? So that has an effect of actually lowering the, making a lower tax rate than it would normally have been if we didn't have that much growth. So the rate is going from a zero point six five for a hundred dollars of assessed value and twenty five to zero point six four. Okay? This is going down, actually. Um, which is a good thing, right? So the effect on a, on a home that's assessed at four hundred and, let's say, well, pull a figure out of my hat, four hundred and thirty five thousand dollars is a forty three dollar increase. Okay? So if your property was valued at four hundred and thirty five thousand last year and is still valued at that this year, it's a forty three dollar increase. This year's average assessed value is four hundred and sixty one thousand. So if your home was worth four hundred and sixty one thousand last year and this year is worth four hundred and sixty one thousand, it calculates out to about forty six dollars. Slight, slight difference because it's more, it's a higher, it's a higher number. So our tax rate is one, one and a half percent. The increase is one and a half percent. The tax rate is that zero point six four. So whatever your value is, we're going to multiply it by point six four. Is this where I can go to the, I'm sorry, six, five, yes. Is this where I can go to the tax calculator? So we have this calculator that we set up. It's just an Excel document. The one, yeah, that's it. Yep. So you can go to the website and, uh, under the tax collector, right, Billy? Uh, the, the taxes, look for the, the department tax collector, and you'll see something that says, calculate my taxes. So this gives a breakdown of what you're going to pay for the municipal portion, the library, the school, county and open space. We don't, I don't have the final figures for, for county or county open space. So this is an estimate for those two. But everything else, we know. We know the library portion, we know the municipal, and we know the school. Uh, assuming that that, that's going to be passed. And I, I, I think the county superintendent is going to, is going to let that go through. So no issue. So, so what we're looking at here is a comparison between, can this? I'm just going to push it up a little bit so you can see. So if your property was worth four hundred and thirty five thousand in twenty twenty four and stays the same, what did we say the increase was? Forty three dollars, right? Right? However, if your property goes from four thirty five last year to four sixty one because of a rebound, it calculates out to four hundred and eighty five dollar increase. Okay? I don't want anybody to be shocked when they go home and they look at their, they get out those little postcards that they bring to the accountant when you have to do your taxes. By the way, what do we have? Blessing, blessing penance. So don't forget. Don't forget. The IRS wants to hear from you. So anyway, get out that little postcard because that has what you paid in taxes in twenty twenty four and what your, what your value is in twenty twenty four and your value is in twenty twenty five. Ms. Albertson, you're going to want to look at yours. Your property had, had a change, had a change. Okay, anyway. So this, uh, this particular worksheet lets you see what the change is. How, so in this case, uh, the municipal portion is going up about two hundred dollars and the school is going up about two hundred dollars. So, um, but for somebody whose value is not changing, it's not going to be that, that dramatic. And in fact, in fact, put in here. Your value stayed the same, you're likely going to see a decrease. Right? At no time did my, my wrist leave my sleeves, right? You're going to see a decrease. The municipal side went up to forty three dollars, right? But everybody else is kind of going down. So yay for you, you know, good, good on you for, for, uh... So now, now, now you got to go home and look at that card, right? You want to see, you want to see how the change was. And this is just the, the way that the math works is, I'm not doing anything different. But, um, and you can put, you're only allowed to go in between the, you know, the two. You, you can see the, the person going back and forth, only between those two spots. So it's, it's, uh, pretty foolproof that, that this will work for you. All right? So that's something that you can do in your leisure. Let's go back to the snapshot. All right. Everybody feel good about this? You, you understand, right? You got the picture? Okay. All right. So tax rate, sixty five cents for a hundred dollars. It's an increase of one point five percent. And as we saw, it doesn't necessarily mean an increase or a decrease, right? You have to, you have to see where you were last year and how it compares to this year. All right. So the borough's portion is about twenty six percent of the total tax bill. And again, we haven't gotten the county's final figures yet. I made an estimate, you know? Who knows what it's really going to be? And that will affect these, these numbers in the end. But the other, the other question is, is how did your value change?
I'm sorry, I think it's just very important to make the first. We don't send the budgets outside of our budget. By the other tax, we just, we just, like, thirty five, it's a thingy there. So we get a bill, ten thousand dollars, and we get twenty six hundred dollars for the year to grow. There are any valid, basic public spending that we have to pay. Or just a thingy. Fifty two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. So in twenty twenty five, the average home, and there's no average homes. And now we're all above average, right? Like, like Wobegon. The average assessment, four hundred and sixty one thousand. The municipal portion in total is about three thousand, as we, as we talked about. And here's the, we do have a page on the website that has the, uh, the budget and also the calculator at that, at that website, right? Yeah, that's a good, that's a good link, right? Yeah. All right, Alex, this is you, right?
We, we talk about the average home paying taxes, a tax rate of eight dollars and twenty two cents per day. All right. And what do you get out of that eight dollars and twenty two cents per day is all the different, all the different departments and all the different avenues of where your tax dollars going. So we'll just do a little... Your day starts off, you take a shower. The water is going down in the drain, it's going to stormwater, which is madness by the borough. Get out on the road, you're driving down the road. You come to an intersection, and there at the intersection is a crossing guard, which is our own boy working, doing a crossing guard. Might drive down the road a little bit further and it might be an accident. Who's on the scene for the accident? Your police department, our, our finest, police department, fire department, rescue squad, borough, borough, uh, borough funds. Get to work. You get an alert. Communication coordinator sends you a message that the DOT project on Second Street Road is now open. Okay? That's borough employee giving you the message that a borough, borough project is open, where your tax dollars are going. Get home, grab something to eat. Actually, before you go home, you have to put something to eat. You have to go, go get your dog license. You stop over. And where do you get your dog license? From borough employee. Then you go home, grab a quick lunch, uh, quick dinner. And now you got to go down to the T-ball game at McCoy Park. Park maintained by borough employee. And ran by a borough employee running the rec program. Leave the ballgame, start driving home. It's getting dark, the lights are on. Where is that from? It's the taxes, all the taxes that you're paying. And that eight dollars and twenty two cents is going to all those things that just came across your plate. A lot of times, things that you just take for granted, that you don't think about when you're paying your taxes. It is what you're, you're paying for. It was a project that we worked on when we were in one of our classes. So when you look at the, uh, public safety, uh, this past, in twenty twenty four, the police had two, twenty thousand, one hundred and forty four calls to service. The fire department had three hundred and ten incidents. First aid, rescue squad responded to three, over three hundred calls. Code enforcement had six hundred and eighty seven inspections. Infrastructure, okay? This past year with infrastructure is that we repaired a lot of sanitary storm sections. Along the way, we, we have increased in the borough seventeen new storm catch faces. This past year, we put in eleven hundred linear feet of curving on some of the road projects. Uh, and along the way, we also had some safety enhancements because we want to make sure everything is safe for our residents. Last but not least, the past year, we had one point eight miles of, of roads newly paved. Uh, Public Works, as always, they're just, they're doing the park maintenance, maintaining the grass, curbside pickup, uh, multiple months a year where they're picking up leaf bags, picking up branches. This past year, they did three hundred and ten miles of street sweeping. That's a lot of times around the town. Other than that, they're doing their, their daily tasks of, uh, winterizing, plowing streets, salting, et cetera. Every year, they go through, uh, inspecting and cleaning all of our catch spaces. And then you want to go over to, we talk about our community events, you know, our recreation programs, our sports programs, our senior bus, our, our senior programs, music in the park, all, all the stuff, that all the funds that the tax dollars go in towards to all the operations of different departments. All all the stuff that all the funds that the tax dollars go into is to all the operations of different departments. And.
So included in the in the operating budget is a is a plan, is a capital plan, they call it. And we're enacting that that plan tonight with a what's called a bond ordinance. That will authorize uh almost three point four million dollars in spending. And this is for, I think I mentioned the Mason Dump Truck. It's for it's for um. Street and roadway improvements on on Second Street. It's for mill and pave on some of the some of the uh smaller streets that we do. Along with Middlesex County. It's IT improvements, it's it's a plow, there's a plow in there, there's, I forget what else is uh uh included in this. But it's it's in your packets tonight, council, it's in your packets for for review for the introduction of this of this bond ordinance. Yes. Streetscape, streetscape, mhm, mhm, right, right, mhm, assessment, the uh what um uh. Yep, 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 okay, so um so all altogether and then we also did a a uh. Another bond ordinance earlier this year. Um, it just escaped me, but what it what it was for, but um. I I wanna take this point to mention that. These big ticket items, we pay for them by borrowing money and then we have to pay the interest and the principal um on that. In in successive years. So we have a combination of short and long-term borrowing that we do. And the the short-term borrowing is for a year usually. And we just recently sold about seven million dollars in a short-term note. That we had a a pretty different process. For where we went, we took bids electronically as well as uh, you know. Sent in by by email. We had we had uh bid two bids that that differed by about um. I don't know, in in the interest. So the way the way. The way companies bid on this is how much interest? Are they gonna pay on your seven million dollars, seven and a half million dollars? So the difference in in interest wound up being about five thousand dollars. That was the difference between the two bids. So we got the the winning bid was a coupon rate of three and a half percent, which is excellent. Right? The other uh the other bid was four percent, but they had a a what they call a premium. Which they were willing to give us more money than we were asking for. Um, but when you look at the those two bids, the difference comes to about five thousand dollars. So. That's that's pretty impressive. We're borrowing we're borrowing seven and a half million dollars and and uh the difference in the in the interest is about five thousand dollars. So. Um, that's my notice to the uh Borough Council that the results of the bond sale. So so next year, we'll be renewing that note, maybe maybe including some of this new material that we wanna uh purchase. So we can expect that that the interest cost, of course, is gonna go up, but we're gonna keep an eye on when to go out and when to borrow for these things. So that we do are doing it um. With an eye to to, you know, what the market is doing. And and try and stay and try and get as as competitive bids as we can. So um. Let's see, I should mention that that of that three point, almost three point five million dollars in uh spending. Over a million of that, almost one point two million is supported by grants. So that means we don't have to borrow that money. Right? It's it's being paid for by grants. Mostly it's Department of Transportation grants, but it's also um. Let's see, it's DOT infrastructure grants and and there's another one, the hundred and seventy. It it that's DOT, yeah, okay, okay. Um, yeah, so so seeking the grants, seeking out grant opportunities is is something that we can do and try to lower. What the overall cost is gonna be to the to the borough. So the capital plan that's included in the budget is. Does not appropriate or authorize the expenditure of any funds, but it's it's a recommended plan. However, the ordinance that we're gonna introduce tonight. Is the first shot at spending that money. Um, so you you can you can think of it as you get a couple bites of the apple here, right? So the the first, the very first bite is in the capital plan. And our capital plan is pretty much based on the ordinance that you're gonna see uh tonight. Uh, the the three point four million. The the bond being being introduced, that's another bite of the apple. In two weeks, we're gonna have the public hearing and adoption of that ordinance. So it's another another bite at the apple. And then the spending can happen, not before, okay? So that's what I mean, you have a couple bites of the apple council before you before anybody, you know, actually spends any money. All right, so um. Yes, that last line, the Borough Council will need to take additional action to execute the proposals. So. I love that question mark because it looks like an upside down S, right, right? What fault is that? I don't know. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Spellbound, huh? Okay, all right. Thank you all and on to the business at hand, right?
Next on our agenda. Excuse me. It's a proclamation celebrating April as National Volunteer Month, and we have a few volunteers here this evening that. Have decided to uh volunteered to uh read the proclamation on volunteering. So welcome Peg Lockwood, Chair of the DDMO and also still Secretary of Denellin Arts and Inclusion Culture Commission. Uh, Sharonda Weiss-Shimp, who is the Vice Chair of the Denellin Arts. Inclusion and Culture Commission, as well as a Board of Directors member to the Board of Trustees and a Board of Education member. And then Mary Ann Myers, who is the Chairwoman of the Denellin Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission. So, welcome.
I can start it? All right. Whereas National Volunteer Month is celebrated throughout the United States of America each year in the month of April. And whereas it is time to celebrate and recognize the contribution of volunteers and serves as an opportunity to join the impact of volunteerism. And encourage more people to get involved in their local communities and.
Whereas volunteering in Denellin benefits our community and provides our volunteers with unique opportunities to meet new people. Learn new skills and make a difference in the lives of others and. Whereas the Borough of Denellin offers volunteering opportunities for individuals of all interests. Through the Denellin Planning Board, Denellin Library Board of Trustees. Shade Tree Commission, Denellin Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission. Denellin Downtown Management Organization, Parks and Recreation Commission. Denellin Municipal Alliance, Denellin Parking Authority, Denellin Fire Department, Denellin Rescue Squad. Mower House Restoration Committee, Mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Task Force. Office of Emergency and Management, Mayor's Cannabis Task Force and Denellin Green Team Advisory Committee and.
Whereas the Borough of Denellin is home to countless volunteers. Who meaningfully give back to our Miracle Mall and donate their time and effort to improve daily life for residents and visitors alike. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Mayor Jason F. Salento. And the Denellin Borough Council recognized April twenty twenty-five. As National Volunteer Month in the Borough of Denellin. And encourage residents to join us in celebrating the many ways our volunteers contribute to and improve our borough. Jason F. Salento, Mayor, Borough of Denellin, April seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Thanks, Sharonda. And Mary Ann for your volunteerism, as well as all the volunteers that make up our volunteer agencies and organizations in the borough. Uh, both municipal, RAN, as well as the nonprofits that are in the town. Our town's able to do what it does because of the. Countless hours and efforts of our volunteers. So thank you and another round of applause for all our volunteers. Thank you. Item number five on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes, our regular meeting of March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have a motion in second, please? Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Any comments, additions, redactions as the meeting minutes currently stand? Without hearing any roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay, um, item number six on the agenda is the introduction of ordinances. We have three this evening. Twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, twenty twenty-five dash ten, and twenty twenty-five dash eleven. So. Can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty-five dash zero nine and ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year two thousand twenty-five? Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
I heard Albertson. Oh, my God.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Upstate.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty-five dash ten and ordinance to amend the general legislation of the Borough of Denellin Municipal Code? Chapter two zero four, Parks and Playground, Section Four, Sporting Events and Water Activities, Use of Vehicles. Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Lance.
I'll just note for the record before we take roll call, this is adding uh G, letter G, to uh Section One. Which is no person shall ride or drive e-bikes, motorized scooters, or other motorized vehicles within any park or playground. This prohibition shall not apply to the use of motorized scooters or vehicles by persons with disabilities. This is being done because we've had an issue with these. Motorized or electric bikes going through our parks and disturbing the peace and passive recreation. Um, and also on our facilities. Um, so that's why this is being presented. Um, so this is an introduction. Uh, the hearing and possible adoption will be at the next council meeting. So um, that's why this is being introduced. Can I have a? Roll call, do we do motion in second?
Yeah.
Roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty-five dash eleven? Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the Borough of Denellin appropriating. Three million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million three hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and forty dollars bonds or notes. Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Lance.
Roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Upstate.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number seven on the agenda is resolutions. We have uh resolutions one fifty-four through one seventy-one with uh exception of one fifty-five. Which we voted on earlier this evening. So Mrs. Stack, if you could take the. Do the motion in second and then just let us discuss it, need be.
Resolution number one fifty-four is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Rio.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one fifty-six is to hire Dana Downing as yoga instructor for the spring season for the Denellin Recreation Department.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one fifty-seven is to hire Sheila Dai as a music instruction instructor for the Denellin Recreation Department.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Lance.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one fifty-eight is to support the submission of application for the New Jersey Department of Transportation. For the Transportation Alternatives Program.
Move it, Rios?
Second, Sigmund?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one fifty-nine is to award a contract to Verizon for police vehicle laptop computers, air cards.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
I have a question.
Sure.
Cards, um, there was a term here about um over-usage and um an additional hundred dollars for that. Um, if there could just be some um. More clarification on what these air cards are for and how would you overuse them?
Yeah.
Okay, and then what does over-usage refer to? And just to be clear, because I'm not familiar with air cards or any of the technology used in police vehicles, but what is the purpose of the air card?
The air card is for the internet access, so that you can get through DMV, you know, plates, monitors.
Thank you.
There any other questions? Okay, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And you'll get clarification from Debbie?
Yes, for tomorrow.
Thank you.
Resolution number one sixty is awarding a contract to DND Painters for the exterior painting of the Mower House not to exceed thirty-two hundred dollars.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
This is specifically painting. Okay. Okay. And everything that would potentially cause more damage after painting has been remediated, like the gutters and everything? I'm like even the I'm talking about like the gutters that were leaking like. Okay.
Yes, I have a question. Is this gonna be some kind of like a waterproof painting paint or like? An industrial kind of weatherproof paint?
To make exterior, right? Any other questions? Thank you.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-one is introducing the twenty twenty-five municipal budget.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one day, uh, this uh. Resolution has somewhat uh, unusual and unique situation involved with it, but I'd like to just explain. So that the council public is aware of the situation. The Danellen Municipal Budget is required by law to be introduced and adopted. Within a very specific timeframe and when it's the public hearing on this has to be May fifth. Uh, the uh, we should note that Councilman Scott is the chief of Danellen. By Volunteer Fire Department, Councilwoman Rios is a volunteer member. Certainly, they don't have any financial interest in. In that organization, but I would note that the budget includes uh, funds appropriate for use by the fire department. Uh, the question is whether or not uh, council members can vote on the introduction and adoption of. Uh, budget. Uh, the unusual situation is that the budget requires uh, it to be passed by. A majority of the full governing body would be four members. And due to uh, significant medical reasons, I anticipate. Councilman Vanamar is is not here or able to uh, vote on the budget. Uh, as a result, we have a situation where uh, there would not be sufficient council members available. Uh, to pass the budget, which is uh, great significance to boroughs legally has to be done. Uh, and so I've looked at the issue and the question is uh, whether or not. Uh, the council members, who are members of the fire department, uh, can or should or are obligated to vote on the budget resolution. Uh, I would note that the uh, local government ethics law uh, would preclude a government officer from. Uh, voting on any matter in which they have direct indirect personal financial interest. Uh, in this particular case, there's absolutely no suggestion that either of those members has any personal uh. Or direct financial interest uh, in uh, in the budget, particularly funds allocated to the place. Uh, however, there are some number of fire department, there are a number of cases uh, that do suggest that a. Member of a organization such as a church or an organization, uh, they, those members. Uh, uh, would be having imputed this qualification uh, if they're a member of council. Spring port, however, in case of the vasty, has indicated that that's not a bright line rule. And that uh, sometimes that can be unnecessary and unjust. In particular, uh, these notorious, it was a case out of Earth Heights. Uh, we dealt and distinguished between council members, one who held a leadership position. In a church church organization, another council member who was a member and moderately involved. But had no active participation, no knowledge of any legal proceedings whatsoever. And in in this particular case, I think it's important to distinguish between Councilman Scott, who has a leadership position in the fire department. And uh, Councilwoman Rios, who is a member, an active member of the fire department, but has no uh, leadership. Uh, interests, uh, and again, certainly no personal and financial uh, interest in the uh, budget monies appropriate to the fire department. On on top of that, there is also something known as a doctrine necessity or a rule of necessity. And while it's very limited and circumscribed, there are situations in which a public body simply cannot act. If there are not members uh, who could take action. And to the extent, even if there was uh, a a conflict in this particular situation. Uh, I've looked at the cases in particular, Allen versus Combs River. Regional Board of Education, which involved a very similar situation to this. Uh, the courts acknowledged that the rule of necessity would apply. And that a conflict would and would need to be waived in order for a budget to be passing. Or municipal body to do its statutorily required duty. So, I'm under all the circumstances, my advice to Councilwoman uh, Rios. And to Councilman Scott and to Borough Council is that, that Councilwoman Rios, in in my opinion. And I've advised her as such is that uh, she may and should uh, vote on the budget. Councilman Scott, uh, because it's only necessary that one of the members vote. Councilman Scott has uh, more of the leadership interest. I would recommend that he not participate or vote on the budget resolution. Uh, but again, I I do believe that to the limited extent that there may be. Actway for a Councilwoman Rios, that under the circumstances in this case. Uh, that any, that it's simply, there's an obligation to vote on this so that the budget can be introduced. Uh, that my recommendation is, and opinion is, that the any conflict to the extent it exists should be waived. And that you may and should vote on this, on this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Let's take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Upstate.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one sixty-two is to authorize a self-examination of the budget.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Lance.
So if I could just jump in, what this, what this is, um. Every certain, every few years, the Division of Local Government Services reviews the budget. And they do that on years when the, when the borough is ineligible to self-review. Uh, it's been a while since we, we have been allowed to be self-reviewed, mostly because of the. American Rescue Plan Act and. Step that we took when COVID uh, was was running, that uh, we didn't qualify. For self review, journalism, taking this amount of time to get to a point where we are now eligible for self review. What that means is that. We will take a look at the items that escape what other ones they look at. Uh, are we, did we budget enough for debt service? Are our estimates of revenues reasonable? Uh, there's a number of items like that 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 can look at. Um, the auditors have already reviewed the budget and they've signed off on it, so they're comfortable with the the figures. I mean, it's well, so at this point, in order to. To keep it, that that we are doing the review, council would pass this resolution. And I think it's, it's supposed to be every, once every three years, the division wants to look at the budget. Take a deep dive. You still gotta look at it, but not to the extent that it would if we had asked them to, or that would be one. So we are eligible, and so that's why you haven't seen this for those that have been on the council. That's why you haven't seen this presentation.
Thank you. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Just clarification, budget, so I would abstain, correct?
Don't know that it's necessary in this particular case.
Do it for good measure.
Yeah.
Same. And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-three is to amend the twenty twenty-five temporary capital budget.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
So, before, if I, may I just jump in? Before the, the budget is adopted, uh, which includes the, the capital plan. Um, and where there's interest in, in adopting a bond ordinance, which. Was introduced previously tonight, um, we also need to amend the temporary capital budget. So, remember that the, that the first ordinance that we gave a few months, well, February was a feasibility. So, at that time, we had, we had the temporary capital budget that only included that particular. Now, with the ordinance that was introduced tonight and that one. I've gathered all of that information together. It's, it's now the amended temporary capital budget. It includes everything that is on the bond ordinance that you've seen, plus the feasibility stuff. So, this is just, this is amending the, the temporary capital budget and. Once the budget is adopted, then you probably won't need to do any more of a separate.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, this only requires a majority vote, not the majority of voting membership. So the Councilwoman Rios could, could abstain on this, so we could still move forward with the project.
Yes, this doesn't include uh, appropriation for.
So, my suggestion would be that Councilman Scott and Councilwoman Rios abstain on this. Since there's not the requirement of the four voting members, this can be done by just a majority of members present.
Okay.
Was suggested.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a roll call. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Upstate.
Mr. Scott?
Upstate.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-four is to appoint Ken Hing as a fire department member.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
Well, before we vote, I'll just say thank you for him stepping forward and volunteering, especially during Volunteer Month.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Upstate.
Mr. Scott?
Upstate.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
You know, Mr. Olson, really quick, I meant to say after the presentation, if being a CFO is not, you know, your long-term, you know, thing. After how many years, you know, you give yourself a mic, you're quite the stand-up, so you know, maybe uh, amateur hour at uh, the stress factor might be good. Take it on the road.
Okay, resolution number one sixty-five is to request adding an increase in the amount of change kept on hand in the clerk's office.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund?
Why did you say? This was a recommendation of our partners, then we had accomplished.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-six is to avail the borough as a statutory due date extension.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Rios?
The floor is all yours, whenever you need it, Scott.
Uh, so, so there was a local finance notice that came out uh, not too long ago. Regarding the, the statutory decom for the, for the budget, okay? February tenth is the actual statutory due date for when the budget is supposed to be introduced. And they, they extended it to March uh, thirty-first or the first meeting there. And it said, within the, the text of the local finance notice, to avail yourself of these days. Adopt this resolution. So, we are availing ourselves of the date. This is, this is a belt and suspenders kind of way of approaching this. Some of my colleagues uh, um, are questioning what the, the need, the necessity for doing this. But, like I said, it's belt and suspenders, so it, it doesn't do any harm.
I'll take a roll.
This is the first time we've seen this stuff.
Okay.
It's the first time it's been, it was noted in the.
And it's belt senses others. And you do metaphors, this is great. Love you, Scott.
Okay, Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-seven is to approve a shared services agreement. With Middlesex County Improvement Authority for Recycling Collection Services.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
Mr. Miller, do you want to address this one?
Sure. So it's been in the works for a while, and looking at is the um. NCI is gonna be providing uh, ninety-five down. Uh, recycling for all the residents. With a lot of going back and forth on how it operates in a fit place, uh, schedule will be the same. Um, the, the um. Company that's, that's, that does recycling will be delivering each container to each residential home. So, they'll be shut off wherever residents will be, they're uh, contained. The uh, the recycling containers that people have now, you can do two, two fifty, keep it. Or you can put it out on the curb and the county will take those recycling. And they're expecting this to all come into play sometime in the summer. They're gonna provide uh, a, a, a container for each resident, we're not gonna be a serial number on the containers still. And then they'll provide some extra ones for the borough. So, uh, any new residents, if any of your house come into play, they'll be able to get them.
How's it gonna work with like the Main Street uh, buildings?
Same thing, just like for, you know, there for that seventeen, uh, it's like one, three percent across from uh. You know, um, suburbs, which uh, a couple of them, they obviously won't be this much, but they'll be operating.
Okay.
This'll be bigger.
What happens when there's a, there's a car in front of it?
Um, that's your question, there's a three and five, three and five, I haven't put up where there's no parking area.
Where did, what time do they start? In the morning?
Uh, they usually start around seven AM.
And our, what time is our no parking ordinance until on Main Street?
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, it might be, it might be where we work with the county that they hit the downtown first, because. After a certain hour, people can start parking again. And we need to make sure their signs go up in the downtown.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we're, we're uh, on that, we're straight on the corner, under the chocolate.
And the police have been advised of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're straight on the.
Yeah.
So, questions, um, I'm sorry if you've already said this, but how many containers per household?
One.
One, okay.
They're, they're large, I mean, I have, I have one in my house. For eighteen years, but it's less than one.
Okay, and we'll. Okay, that was a question. Um, the other one is, I'm assuming that there'll be some communication about. Um, the rolling out of the new company?
Yeah, as, as we're getting to a date, the county will, will. In many ways, we can't get out for that.
When's the next insert, Miller?
Um.
Um, June.
Because even if we don't have an exact date, we, at least we know that goes to every single door, and we can say a general announcement.
Yeah, you do that.
Okay, that's a great point, Councilman.
Yeah, and um, because you are not expecting this to fully roll out until sometime in the summer. Um, it seems that the agreement here is for three years at a time. Um, what's being done from now until the summer?
What happens if there is overflow? Like you have, you know, somebody has an Amazon purchase addiction and they're. What happens if there is overflow? Like you have, you know, somebody has an Amazon purchase addiction and there's so many bashing. Not speaking by personal.
Experience?
Saying.
I um I've had that experience myself. You can't, you couldn't put a board and and not next to the container, but something might just hold it for the next round. They do get a lot in those containers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-eight is authorizing the release of the cash performance guarantee for work
God bless you.
Work performed at one fifty North Avenue, block one, lot fourteen.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-nine is to authorize professional services for general engineering to CME associates for the Mauer House assessment.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Do you know how long this process is going to take? That's it for me. Counsel?
Okay, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy is to award a contract to Garden State Paving Solutions for the milling and paving of Second Street for an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty and seventy-four cents.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
On this part of Second Street, just wanted to be clear that this is uh the shortest place in the town of West Side. The other part of uh Second Street, the shorts going to Madison Avenue. This, the the work that will be done on this section will match the same one that's been done. You want that one plot, say, okay. So all that, uh, so the same work to be done on the curb of the bench, or who needs this? And uh, more than that. You know, page and uh and the acres as well as the property. The match. First product, you know, you're trying to build.
As close to as possible.
I do have a I spoke to the engineers. If the um the project starts on the DOT, if they start sure going towards Madison, to give them multiple towards DOT, they start by Madison, of course. Where the, you know, wheels and port are in the contract for the dark state.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, and if I'm recalling my recalling this correctly, we, you know, we did request through the engineers when we went to go bid for the project with DOT, could this be extended? And they had advised because the grant was only specific and the the application was specific that we couldn't. So that's why it had to be done separately.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-one is to award a contract to Garden State Paving Solutions for the repair of the ADA ramp at the Denon Public Library for an amount not to exceed six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yes, um, I mean, all the I want to
The ADA ramp there right now is elevated up the vision of property. So when they're coming, they're doing, starting to pull off the command. And they'll take up the old concrete, refresh it pretty great. Make sure everything is flush. This way, if somebody's coming up with a we'll get a shot, like a walker.
And the other.
And you replace the tire and you replace the portion back.
The other reasoning is is because we're doing the the facility assessment for the library. And this is an immediate need to make sure it's in code, also because we're also having the election.
Correct.
There's two voting districts there. So um this is an immediate fix that needs to be done to make it compliant, not just for generally being compliant, but we're on an hour timeline due to the election. So this is a a micro improvement. And then we're looking at through the assessment when it comes across our desk, the councils, what other improvements need to be done. So.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have resolutions one seventy-two through one seventy-eight. Please take a glance at it. Any resolutions you wish to be taken out, please let us know.
One seventy-three.
One seventy-three, okay. Okay. And we have a motion and second on one seventy-two through one seventy-eight, uh, absent of one seventy-three.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Never motion and second on one, resolution one seventy-three.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
So just a question on the amount that's to be refunded. Is there an amount and can it be shared?
So I believe um the escrow that they provided was five thousand two hundred and fifty initially. And then there's been accrued interest, a couple hundred dollars accrued interest. So I think it's fifty-four and about fifty.
Question, so we've we've spoken to all the professionals, everybody that would be hitting to the escrow, they they are fully made whole before we release this money?
I believe Derek White did that, he did.
Okay, if that's the case, I would ask that we get a balance on here and we table this to the next council meeting. But the escrow in the grand scheme of things, it is their money, absent if the if the professionals have not charged against it and made whole. Um, basically what's being returned is the money that is left over in the escrow that was not spent in theory, but um and because the project did not come through, so we have to return the money. But we need to just, we need to make sure that that uh it's been analyzed.
No, this was from five oh one North Ave portfolios. DEV zero two two. Yeah, you were thinking of one fifty.
Right.
Okay, so let's just do this. Let's get a a firm answer, make sure the professionals that would have had the charges count from our end actually did that. So they're made whole. Um, and uh, just what the number would be after we understand what that balance is going to be. Okay?
Yeah.
And someone just notify uh developers that we tabled it. So this way, you know, they're aware of the situation too. Thank you. So do we need them looking second for a table? Can I have a motion and second to table resolution one seventy-three? Move it?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine is council reports. Council members, Councilmember Albertson?
Fire Department responded to twenty-eight calls uh for service in March. And total calls for twenty twenty-five are ninety-three. Incident types were fire nine, false alarm nine, service call one, hazmat six, good intent, two, monthly total of twenty-eight. Members attended several events and held several drills during February. On the tenth, they held a monthly officers meeting and work drill. On the fifteenth, they assisted at the Greenbrook Fire Department taking down the star display at House Two. On the nineteenth, members were recertified in CPR. On the twenty-second, they emptied the storage unit of the last items to return to the firehouse. On the twenty-sixth, they held their monthly fire company meeting. On the twenty-ninth, they stood by at the LRWP runoff five K. They're happy to see a number of members joining the department for the past few months. New members will be attending fire school in the upcoming months. Our department is still looking for new members to join. Our department membership is open to anyone sixteen to eighteen as a junior member and full member is open to anyone over eighteen. Visit their website at www.denellenfd.com or email joinfd@denellenfd.com for more information. The Friends of the Denon Public Library are having their murder mystery dinner on May tenth at the George W. Hodglick Firehouse. Um, interested in tickets, please get in touch with us through the library, or you can check out Facebook and get information there. Our open air market begins on May fourth. Downtown Denon Management Organization will join us with their annual spring into wellness event. Visit us at Washington Memorial Park between eleven AM and three PM. If you're interested in being a vendor, contact them at friendsofthedenelonlibrary@gmail.com. Proceeds from Friends fundraising events help to provide programs such as the the Women's History Program, as well as Museum Pass's Summer Reading Program events and prizes and so much more. Follow the Friends on Facebook and Instagram. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rios?
Yes. Buildings and ground report. DPW has completed work on the new multipurpose office. DPW and School Co- groundskeeper continue to maintain the borough's ball fields in preparation for the spring season. Weather permitting, six trees downtown are scheduled to be replaced this week. Afterward, DPW will plant topsoil, mulch and mulch around all new trees to complete the project. An additional order of blocks has been placed so that DPW can continue installing block borders around the planters at Washington Memorial Park. Parsa report. P S E N G replaced a section of the sewer main on Pulaski Street between the Culvert and South Avenue. This section was damaged during the installation of a new gas service line to a home on Pulaski Street. Parsa was on site to oversee the repair. Board of Ed, the public hearing and adoption on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school budget will be held on Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM at Lincoln Middle School. The next Board of Ed meeting will be scheduled for April eighth at seven PM. Spring break will take place April fourteenth through April eighteenth. So always please be extra cautious when driving around town, especially during spring break, as children will be riding bikes, hopefully, playing ball and enjoying the nicer weather. A huge thanks to the parents who have volunteered this seasons for the season soccer program. Your support makes these programs possible, and we know the kids are excited for the upcoming spring clinic. And the library. Check out these upcoming programs at the Denon Public Library. Adult Bingo, April tenth. Adult Paint Along, April thirtieth. Teen Butterfly Tea Party, April thirtieth. Teen and tween Dungeons and Dragons, April twenty ninth at three thirty. For more details and additional programs, please visit the Denon Library's website and follow them on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lance?
Yes, for um the Recreation Department. Denon's annual Easter egg hunt is scheduled for this Sunday, April thirteenth at Columbia Park, kicking off promptly at one PM. This event is exclusively for Denon residents, children pre-K through third grade. Don't forget to bring a basket and arrive on time. Stick around after the hunt for a photo opportunity with the Easter Bunny. And play ball. Join us for our opening day parade and ceremony on Saturday, April twenty-sixth at ten AM. The parade will kick off at Washington Park and proceed north along Washington Avenue to McCoy Park, where the opening day ceremony will be held. Teens should gather at Washington Park by nine forty AM. After the ceremony, stick around for our volunteer picnic. This year, our volunteer picnic day will align with opening day festivities. Enjoy games, music, food, baseball, and much more. Take this opportunity to connect with the volunteers in our community. Interested in becoming a volunteer? This is the perfect chance to find out more. And softball season kicks off this week in the Somerville League. Our rookies will play their inaugural home game at on April ninth at Faber Field, starting at six PM. Meanwhile, our minors were scheduled to play their first game tonight, but it was rained out. We look forward to cheering on our softball teams this season. Whether you're a player, coach, or supportive family member, your enthusiasm and encouragement make all the difference. Best of luck to the Little Lady Destroyers, wishing you a fantastic season ahead. And with that said, Denon Recreation extends heartfelt thanks to all our parent volunteer coaches. Your dedication allows us to provide a wide range of programs for our youngest Denon residents, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Council President Sigmund?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank Scott and Alex for all their hard work on the budget and bringing some uh joy and merriment to what can oftentimes be a tedious process. Um, and the way you presented it, Alex, with actually walking the budget through our day, I think that was a really good spin. So thank you all for your hard work. And also, um, another call for volunteers. Seems like everyone's doing that now, really are the backbone of what happens here. Uh, so if you have the time, I highly recommend you volunteer your services to help others, and you will also get some joy and merriment out of that as well. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Scott?
Short Sweet Republic Works. They continue to inspect and clean the catch bases throughout the borough. They completed the multipurpose office. Continue brick repair around the new downtown trees. They walk the brooks and streams to clear debris as needed. Cleared the catch base and lids throughout the borough. Cleared the debris from the trash trap and continue to prep work for the ball fields for the upcoming sporting season. And a reminder, curbside branch pickup takes place in March and April, so the end of the month will be it for curbside. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just writing one last slot down. I apologize. Okay, there we go. Okie dokie. Um, National Volunteer Month, I think we've uh we're driving that home tonight, but I would also like to express my sincere gratitude to Peg Lockwood, Marian Myers, and Sharonda Weiss Shimp, three of our many dedicated volunteers for joining us this evening to read the proclamation celebrating National Volunteer Month here in Denon. Uh, as part of the National Volunteer Month, we will be hosting a mayoral town hall focused on volunteerism on Wednesday, April twenty-third at seven PM at the George W. Hodglick Firehouse. Attendees will have the opportunity to learn more about Denon's boards and commissions directly from some of the volunteers who helped shape our borough and hopefully inspire um to get involved too. Additionally, as mentioned in tonight's recreation port, the Second Annual Volunteer Picnic Day will be held during the same week on Saturday, April twenty-sixth. We are incredibly grateful for our many volunteers and look forward to celebrating their contributions to our community. Um, Gentle Family Dentistry, tenth anniversary. I'd also like to extend a congratulations to Gentle Family Dentistry, Dr. Seema Mian and her wonderful staff and family on celebrating their tenth anniversary this past Saturday. Uh, what started as a part-time practice in April of two thousand fifteen has grown into a thriving full-time dental office, and we wish them continued success for many more years to come. Second Street Phase One, which is Second Street and Madison Avenue to Schwartz Place. Uh, the contractor has confirmed that the project is set to begin on the week of April twenty-eighth. The first phase will focus on curb restoration, during which the contractor will remove severely damaged curbs and driveway aprons uh one side of the street at a time. The contractor expects to work on four driveway aprons at a time. During this process, residents may experience up to three days where they cannot access their driveways. Excuse me, weather permitting. So appropriate notice will be sent out to those residents. Um, and we ask for your patience. It's a it's a short-term inconvenience for a long-term um improvement.
We'll make sure.
Yeah. And as I noted to Pete, he's here so frequently, might as well just buy real estate at this point. Um, Washington Avenue Streetlight Project. Last week, our engineers from CME met with PSCNG and NJDOT to discuss the project. Um, Washington Avenue Streetlight Project. Last week, our engineers from CME met with PSCNG and NJDOT to discuss the project and potential potential adjustments. Uh, we expect to have an update in the next two weeks. Uh, the main concern from PSCNG side, um, is that they don't want to put, um, what are they called? Conduits, thank you, underneath the sidewalk at Washington Park to light them. Um, so we're trying to, uh, work with them to make it make sense. I mean, they approved the the plans, so you know, but PSCNG never surprises me. Um, so, uh, we're working to get that done. Second Street Mill and Pave Project, uh, much like Phase One of the Second Street Project. Uh, this initiative will involve the removal and replacement of severely damaged curbs and driveway aprons. After that, the street will be milled and repaved with enhanced striping on Second Street from Schwartz Place to the Denellen and Middlesex border. Uh, ADA, uh, ramp installation, we just talked about that tonight during the resolution, so I'll skip that. Uh, New Jersey American Water Projects on Prospect Avenue, so that's Grove Street to Center Street, Whittier Avenue, New Market to Center Street. Phase one of the project is underway on Prospect Avenue near Prospect Avenue, Culvert and Whittier Ave, New Market. It will continue south towards Center Street. This phase includes the installation of new water main, water services and fire hydrants for each home and of course, after a period of time when everything is settled, a new road. Uh, NJDOT North Ave and Bound Brook Road ADA and RRFB project. Um, work resumed this week to continue the installation of new ADA compliant sidewalk openings throughout the bur, uh, throughout Bound Brook Road and North Ave Corridor. Uh, the contractor will also begin installing concrete footings for the rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the intersections of Bound Brook Road and Sanford Ave and along North Ave and Lincoln Ave, Prospect Avenue and Jackson Avenue. Uh, so, uh, some great news and those lights will be a key intersections that people, you know, want to feel safe crossing. Um, our engineers report client place corrective work is expected to begin this week, weather permitting. They have to infarray one of the, uh, repair, uh, cuts that they had to make. Um, and we will make sure they repair it to make the road look like it was in its new form. Uh, six thirty-five Bound Brook Road, uh, bids were received on March twenty-seventh at eleven AM and are currently under review by the engineers. Comcast work, CME has continued to monitor Comcast's work and will inspect all restoration work associated with the project. Five Hundred Mountain View, uh, Terrace Bike Path, CME is reviewing the grant requirements and preparing budget figures for the borough's use. So that's the come to. TA Set Aside Grant, uh, CME Derrick White and Alex Miller attended a pre-application meeting at the TA Set Aside Grant, March twentieth. The application is currently being prepared. You saw that resolution this evening. New Market Road and Walnut, uh, Walnut Street Intersection. Um, our engineers are requesting an update from Middlesex County because that the legs of that are county legs. Um, on the status of the project, a resolution for the signal agreement may be adopted at the commissioner's meeting. Oh, it was supposed to be it was supposed to be this past month, so we gotta, we gotta double check that because my notes don't reflect that. And the scope of the work is being finalized. Um, New Market Road and South Washington Intersection, you'll you'll check, double check that? No, New Market and Walnut to make sure the county, yep, thank you. New Market Road and South Washington Ave Intersection, the Light by the Knell. Uh, CME has requested a status update from the county and expects a response mid to late April. And then RRFP studies, uh, CME has begun studies for the rapid uh, beacon light installations at various locations in the borough, absent of the North Ave Route twenty-eight, because that's a separate project. Um, and then finally, um, I would like to, uh, just say I recognize that Coach Dave DiNapoli who, uh, who served as a football coach in Denellen since nineteen ninety-six, almost thirty years of service. As a coach to our borough's football team, our school district's football team, the Denellen Destroyers, many of those years in which he was the head coach. Um, he has decided to step down from the position. He's still going to remain working for the borough as the athletic director. Um, but I think it's important to note the hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of football players and students that he has inspired throughout his tenure as a football coach, but also as a athletic director and a physical education teacher. And of course, the thousands upon thousands of people in our community in which whether they know it or not, he has touched their life one way or another. Um, with his community spirit and love for our community. So I'm sure there's going to be more to come in the coming weeks on what maybe as a community we can do. But I just wanted to make note here and as a former student, former varsity football player for Coach DiNaps, I want to personally say thank you. And I know you played on the team. You were on the, were you on the champion year? Oh, sorry. Uh, you also just gave your your age away too. Everybody knows there's Denellen history. But, uh, and there's, I know Mrs. Albertson, Councilwoman Albertson, uh, worked with Dave DiNapoli and, uh, so we know we have a neighbor in here of Dave DiNapoli, so he's, uh, he's touched a lot of people's lives here. And so we thank and we wish him a lot of success and God bless him and we love him. So thank you, Dave. Coach, sorry, coach. So. Okay. That's it for me on that one. Um, item number ten, uh, ten is council discussion. There's no discussion right now on the agenda for this evening. Um, but Lauren will send out her note if there's any future discussions to the council members. Um, item number eleven, department head reports. Legal?
Uh, no report.
Okay, clerk?
Yes, so as we all know, the voting just have changed and a letter went out this week to all voters. I'm just going to read the letter that was sent. Um, so dear voter, this notice is sent to inform you that your polling location has changed. The Middlesex County Board of Election Commissioners have approved the borough's Denon's request on behalf of the Denon School District, to minimize disruption to the operation. This change is effective out of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it gives the chart below to find a new polling location. So Districts one and two are at Denellen, Denellen Senior Center, which is two sixteen Orange Street. Districts three and six are at the Firehouse, which is two thirty-one South Madison. Districts four and five are at the Public Library, which is the one hundred New Market Road. If you are unsure of your polling location district enclosed in the map and also ID the New Jersey Division of Elections, uh, website, and you enter your address and hit code and it will come up and show you the polling location. And if anybody had any further questions, they can contact the.
Okay, thank you. Um, IT?
Uh, no report mayor, but I just wanted to comment on something that you just said earlier with, uh, Coach DiNaps.
Yeah.
Um, he is very influential to me. I remember back when I used to work for like filmmaking for the football team. He always had me included and I'll never forget that. Coach will always be coached to me.
Thanks for sharing. Finance?
Results of the bond extension sale. It was seven and a half million dollars. There were two bids. Effecting Sandler and Alvin Bimer. Five percent was their their base bid was three point five percent and the net interest cost was three point four five six. Alvin Bimer was four percent, but with premium and their net interest cost was three point five. And the difference is five thousand dollars. So very close, urgent, heavy bids.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Olson. Again, thank you for the work that you did with the Finance Committee and Administration on the budget. Um, I think we got a great one this year and, uh, it's a good work. Mr. Miller?
Uh, well, that. Uh, I need to that. There's more. Probably just. That's the five. That's the three. Five round.
Okay, thank you. Police?
Thank you.
Okay. Item number twelve on the agenda is public comments. We ask that you please state your name and address. If we could just make sure the microphone is up there and facing to the audience. Um, we'll start with those in the chamber first, then we'll go to online and then we'll just do a general blanket, so. We just asked you, please state your name and address. Now bring him the mic.
Bring the mic. I do need to go, good.
Oh, there you go. Sweet.
No problem. Dave Morgan, uh, Denon Fire Department, uh, we got a fire department memorial on April twenty-seventh, last Saturday this month. And, uh, we are having our pitchers at the Firehouse at ten thirty by Mr. Gates. And we're going down to the park at eleven for our ceremony. Unfortunately, we had to add George Hotch on it last week. And, uh, followed by that, we're going to have a brunch at Denon Hotel. The mayor and the council are welcome to come if they would like to come. Okay? And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Oh, one more thing.
Yeah.
Can I re, can I get a refund on my recycle bucket I had to pay for?
You know, Mr. Olson, you might have competition for stand-up now. Open mic night. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Dave, tell Nancy that I reset hi. Any other members of the public in chambers, please state your name and address. Okay, we'll move to online. Any members online? We ask that you please state your name and address. One last blanket. Any members of the public both online and in chambers have any comments or concerns? We ask that you please state your name and address. Without hearing any, we will close that portion of the meeting. We have no executive meeting this evening, so item number thirteen on the agenda is adjournment. Uh, before I ask for motion and second, I'll remind everybody that the next mayor council meeting will be held on Monday, April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five at seven PM. In these changer of chambers, you can join in person or by online. We make it very accessible. We know a lot of people like to be on Facebook, so just click that link from Facebook and join us here. Okay. Can I have a motion and second on resolution number one seventy-nine? Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?